Good evening. How are you out there? Oh, I don't hear you. How are you? All right, sounds good. This meeting was called in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, C-231, Place 1975, and notices were forwarded to the Asbury Park Press to board members and were posted as required. Our mission statement: Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Wildrockus.
Ms. Zenzky.
Here.
Mr. Pinkley.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Ms. Setien.
Here.
Ms. Sowasim. Here. Okay, please stand forward to flag, smoothie.
Our vote is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to all, liberty and justice in the law.
Dr. Repalet, do your presentations.
Single resolution, Sergeant.
Hey, good evening. We're delighted to have Assemblyman Houteling and Assemblywoman Downey here with us tonight, and I'm going to ask them to come forward, please, as they have a resolution they'd like to present, along with Senator Ben Gopau.
Where should we present him? The microphone, okay. This is a loss for the city, but a great gain for the state of New Jersey. You know, I remember three, four years ago, morale was down, not just in the school district, but not just the students, but throughout the state in the negative connotation of Asbury Park schools. And an individual with the support of everybody here and an extraordinary staff has helped turn that image around. So, to the superintendent, I'm going to let my colleague say a few words, but we are so excited for you. We are excited not just for Asbury Park, but for the state of New Jersey is going to gain greatly from the leadership that you're about to provide. Assemblywoman?
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations to our wonderful superintendent, now Commissioner of Education, Lamont Repalet. Dr. Repalet, you have done so many wonderful things here for Asbury, and I know that everyone here appreciates it. We definitely appreciate it, and I want to make sure that now we're able to give you something that you can have that shows a little bit of that, just a little bit of that appreciation. But also, the wonderful feeling about it is knowing that we're going to have somebody in Trenton that we can work with and that we can do really solid things in terms of all of our school districts for all of our children, not just select you, but that you're going to keep in mind what everybody needs. And I love when you talk about the social emotional programs, the things that we can actually maybe accomplish now, the things that we can actually go forward with, our school funding, trying to fix that. So, again, this is for all that you've done already here, but also it's to thank you because you are going with us into the future to do much more. So, thank you. We look forward to working with you, all of us. Thank you.
Dr. Repalet, I just wanted to congratulate you for this big position you have, leading the state in education. And you know, what I like the most, you coming from Asbury Park, the school probably has the most challenges in the state of New Jersey, and the things that you've done here that you've been recognized for. And Asbury Park is coming along, and we're very proud of that. We're very proud of three of us to bring you along with that. And you know, great things are happening in Asbury. You've got a great school board, taking great strides, and you're going to lead the state of New Jersey to solve these problems that we're struggling with now in education. So, congratulations to you on your new position and we wish you the best.
(applause).
Career situation, will you have to walk up?
Yeah, no. He wants to be over there.
Security.
There is a tradition that we have.
Do you have security?
Hard hat nation. So, my staff and my team should know that I don't accept awards by myself. I don't. I haven't done that for years. So, this one right here is, I'll say this. This is something that I'm receiving, but this is something that Asbury Park is receiving, right? So, I talk about, you know, Trenton is the world where the Trenton makes the world take its bridge, or guess what? We have Asbury Park. The world goes Asbury Park means the world's king. I am now taking this to Trenton Hastings in my office as a reminder that this is what happens when you work hard. This is what happens when you work as a team, when you collaborate. This is what happens when you put kids first. So, this is not just for me. This is not for my family. This is us, this hard hat nation. And I'm extremely proud to be Governor Murphy's nominee, to be the next Commissioner of Education in the state of New Jersey. (applause). Come on. If you work in the district, come on, stop it. Get up here, everyone up here.
What?
We got standing here, someone's going to take a picture over there. Okay, back here, the camera's saying back. If you work in the district, please come up, if you're part of the hard hat nation. Come on, let's go.
That's right. Ma'am, it's rising.
Maureen, you called you out from lunch. Let's go.
Thank you.
Call you out, Maureen, from lunch.
A lot of these shirts stuck there.
So, you give somebody a camera. Give somebody a camera.
Me?
Excuse me. Sorry, ma'am.
All right, everybody get on.
Mr. Washington, what you got? Come on, get here. Come on, get here.
Everybody can't write.
Come on, Mr. Washington, we got time. Part of our nation.
I want to get your book. That's all right. I'll get my book. And break.
On the count of three, on the count of three.
One second, break. Come on.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. So, on the count of three, buddy, you're hard hat nation. Ready?
Yep.
One, two, three. Hard hat nation! Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
(applause). Can we have another presentation?
Thank you. From Assemblyman Houteling and Assemblywoman Downey.
(inaudible).
And Senator Ben Gopau.
(inaudible).
That's what I was trying.
Are they both for him?
They were supposed...
Yeah.
We have resolutions. Basically, it's for Justin and for the program, the Thought Leaders After School Academy, which is unbelievably outstanding program. And we're so proud of you for all that you've done and for everyone who's involved, for all that you've done with Asbury Park, for all that you do to support it. It's an amazing thing. And so, we're here upon the second year, right, anniversary, and we just want to make sure we commemorate it and by giving you, we have two resolutions here, so you're very lucky you have two, so you can keep them where they need to be so that you can remind people that this is, again, it's an amazing program. It's something that helps so many children, and it extends their hours of being able to learn, eat, be mentored, to do things that are important for their all-around education and betterment, so that hopefully, when they succeed, they will succeed with all of your help, because we know that the cards are stacked against people who are in this type of environment, but that don't have the community support that a lot of other communities might have. And you have actually broken through that. You've broken through that ground and showed people how you should do it, how we need to like help our students, how we can like show that they're smart, intelligent, very ambitious, wonderful students, and all they need is that support. You have helped to make them be who they are, and so, thank you so much, and keep doing what you're doing. Anything we can do to support you in this program, we will continue to do.
Thank you.
It's beautiful. (applause).
I just want to say, on behalf of all of us, this is an incredibly innovative program, and congratulations on not just the kids you're helping now, but for their entire life, they're going to look back on what you've done. So, congratulations.
They'll never forget. It'll be...
I'd just like to say, this is one example of what some communities have to do for their residents of their town, that school is more than just school, and you have proven that. And the school provides a lot of the needs a lot of people don't realize what goes on here in Asbury Park. We do. We're very appreciative of what you have done, and we want you to continue in this fine work that you're doing, and we'll be there to help you anytime you need us.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, first of all, that the Thought Leaders After School Academy has been a dream come true for me. Dr. Repalet and Ms. Gray actually have seen me grow, as well as understand it. Again, they see me grow as an excellent administrator, and so, to see that this program is growing here in this district, I'm really happy that it's doing that, but I could not have done any of this if it was not for the team. My two site coordinators are here, and they do a phenomenal job every day, making sure that the students are in schedules, they're in classes, that they eat, that their parents are taken care of, and I'm just so happy that they are sitting with me after their long days of teaching, extending their workday by two or three hours, and then some, to make sure that our students are safe at school. So, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to do the great work here that we do at the school, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. (applause).
You wanted to stand over here again, too?
What do you say?
Over here? Okay. Oh, Ms. Gray.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. (applause).
We'll be along with our agenda. Our superintendents report, Dr. Repalet.
Now, President, not much I can say, but thank you. Thank you to this board for giving me the opportunity. Four years ago, Principal Carter High School, that felt that he could take on the world and take on the biggest challenge in the state of New Jersey. Four years ago, they said, "Why are you applying to Asbury Park School District? It is a job killer. Why are you applying to Asbury Park School District? Did you read the Asbury Park Press, the Asbury Park Sun? Did you read the press clippings? The board's crazy. The board does not have forms. The community is an uproar. There's going back and forth between the communities." I knew that if I walked in here to give a plan, that would impress the individuals that searched for me, to let you know that leadership starts with believing. It starts with believing that you can do the impossible, which if you look at it, is impossible. So, I knew that I was the right one. I just had to convince individuals there. I remember bringing up a box of hard hats, and Mr. Hastings was helping me out, and I know he was probably saying, "What is this guy doing?" But, and I remember talking to Ms. Gray when we were Carter, remember she's the vice principal, and I said, "I have this idea." I said, "Because if I can go in and just show them that I have a blueprint, build a brighter future for our students in Asbury Park, and give them hope and opportunity, then I know we can turn this around." I didn't know how big the task was until I got the job, and everyone said, "Okay, now put your money where your mouth is, buddy." And I knew that I could not do it alone, so I came up with the concept of Hard Hat Nation, which is a group of dedicated individuals committed to building a brighter future for our students in Asbury Park. I stand here, sit here today, bittersweet, because now Asbury Park School District has propelled me to the number one job in the state of education. So, if you guys took the gamble on me, I appreciate that. I'll never forget this. The staff, my team, we have one ride, boy, I tell you that, for scholastics, reading, to make sure our kids can read, to our college and career academies. I always believed if you build it, they will come. Always said that if we engage our community, we give our students, if we give them something that they can believe in, they will come back to the district. Happy to say our enrollment has gone up. Our high school is over 400 kids. When I got here, it was just above 200, maybe low threes. We had no hope in opportunities. We didn't get any press clippings saying positive things about us, but look at us now. Look at us now, right? Four years later. So, I didn't do this by myself. Hard Hat Nation did this. So, don't forget, don't forget the work that we put in, because the legacy is not my legacy. God has put me in a moment in time to ensure that I build the foundation for the students in Asbury Park. Now, it's time for us, time for me, to move along, move out the way, pass the mantle to someone who I feel is capable enough to build a house. But as you design the house, you need individuals to carry the sheep around, individuals to lay down that into walls and build... I'm telling you about building, but... But you need help. But doing that, you still need to have that hard hat, because that hard hat is a symbol for us that every day we come in this school district, no matter what position, from the board, superintendent, down to our custodian engineers, we are here to serve students. And the minute you forget that, when you fall back into a school district where people talk negatively about us, this is a great community, and has a rich tradition, and we're now just adding on to that tradition. So, my legacy is not just me here. My legacy is seeing building a brighter future continue for years to come, because the goal is that these kids have hope and opportunity, and we have given them that. So, I am thankful, and thankful and proud to be a part of this community, and I'm not going anywhere, so you guys are not getting rid of me. I say something every day that people are going to notice. I say, "Stay humble, stay hungry." So, when I go to Trenton, I'm going to stay hungry, and I'm going to stay humble, and I'm going to take my hard hat with me, and I'm going to build a brighter future for 1.4 million students in the state of New Jersey. And I'm going to ensure that we create a culture of high expectation in the Department of Education, that we restore the tradition and pride of this noble profession that we call education, that we uplift our community, we will educate, we will train, we will empower, and we will reward individuals. So, we're going to bring the sexy back in education home, all right? I promise you that. So, thank you very much. I am beyond humble. God is good. Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda. State Monitor report.
I don't have an actual report, but I would like to say a couple of things. Since I have been in education, and you know that's a long time by the color of my hair, we have not had a Commissioner of Education ever in the forty-some years that I can remember that have been in the classroom recently. And my other advice to Lamont, when I learned of his appointment, was to never forget the classroom teacher, because when all of the other things go away, and that door closes, that's where learning takes place. And I think that it is simply outstanding that the governor has selected someone, as they say, for the first time, who has been in the classroom recently, understands that the only job any of us have is the job that is going to give students an equal opportunity in life. He said it better than I'm saying it, but if he can do that for the state, the way he's done it for the students of Asbury Park, the state's going to really be in for a good ride. So, I congratulate you. (applause). And I congratulate the board that's come a long way from when I first came into the district, to support and make certain that the students' needs are met in the classroom. And they have been supportive of Dr. Repalet, which is really what a board should be doing. And I think that we're in for a continuation of that, and we're going to go through the transition period without a ripple. So, I look forward to, and it's not going to hurt, really, that this will be the first time in my career that I have the Commissioner of Education on speed dial. Of course, he may not answer the phone, but I can, I know where, thank you.
And now, we have public participation with the board's Board Policy, 0167. Please come to the podium. You have three minutes, so much you need, you know, all your information. Okay, thank you. Acceptance and Dismiss, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. Check the motion for A-19A3.
Question. Okay, Mr. Hastings.
Ms. Setien.
Yes.
Ms. Zenzky.
Yes.
Ms. Gray.
Thank you.
Ms. Grillo.
Yes.
Ms. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders.
Yes.
Ms. Setien.
Yes.
Ms. Sowasim.
Yes. Not correct?
Yes.
Agenda.
The last time for actual consent agenda, all items from page B-1 to B-11.
I'll move it. Setien, question.
All items from B-1 to B-11, Ms. Zenzky.
Yes.
Ms. Setien.
Yes.
Ms. Gray.
I'd love to say yes, but I have to abstain from B-1, 1B, and C, and A, B-10, 5B.
B-10, 5...
B.
B. Mr. Grillo.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Pinkley.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders.
Yes.
Ms. Sowasim.
Yes to me, they know to me, they protect to me.
Thank you. All items carried.
Whenever you're ready, Ms. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to present all items from C-1 to C-5.
I'm ready. Second.
Questions or comments? Can you, Ms. Hastings?
Ms. Zenzky.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Gray.
This is to the gentleman?
All items, no, all items from C-1 to C-1.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo.
Yes.
Ms. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders.
Yes.
Ms. Setien.
Yes.
Ms. Sowasim.
Yes.
Thank you, all items carried.
Okay.
This is a difficult time for me, because I'm saying so long to a friend, someone that I met three years ago, when this district was in need, a guidance, needed a light. And I remember, we were so confused. We were a dysfunctional warden, and that stench of dysfunction and dividedness, it permeated throughout the entire district. It infected the staff, the community, and then we did this superintendent search, and some board members wanted to go in one direction. I wanted to stay at the course, because I had met this person that came in, and I thought that he was at the wrong place, because he had a box of hard hats. And I said, "We're not interviewing for engineers or construction." But this state monitor and I just said, "Okay, let's hear what he has to say." And he had a plan, a blueprint, and he began saying what he was going to do in B-1, 2, 3, 4, and that bell for me went off. And so, it was a fight to get him here, but it was well worth it, because of the games, the strides, the things that have taken place here in this district. We have been the butt of the joke for the former governor, who every time he thought of Asbury Park, he talked negatively about us. Our kids, they were laughed at and ridiculed, and we were told, called elected idiots. There's nothing more. What we have here is what Dr. Repalet has brought here in this district with his planning, how we strategize, and he brought his dream team with him. And so, it's bittersweet for me. It's like, I don't want to be his mom, but it's like sending him off. And I know that he's going to do amazing things for the 1.4 children in this state. He's not just building brighter futures for us, he's doing it for all the kids. Can you imagine what they're going to be like? Can you imagine what they are going to have because of him? And so, we have a plan in place, because he's not just leaving us. He has someone that has been working with him from the very beginning, and that is Mrs. Sanche Gray. And I am so proud that she wants to stay and work with us, and she's going to build upon that legacy, that foundation, and she's going to have her own things, her own strategies. And I'm excited to be a part of it. I'm honored to be a part of it. So, whereas Dr. Repalet has proudly and effectively served as superintendent of schools for the Asbury Park School District for more than three years, and whereas the Honorable Phil Murphy, Governor, and recognition of the talent and accomplishments of Dr. Repalet, has selected Dr. Repalet...
This is a difficult time for me. Because I've seen so long to a friend. Someone that I met nearly four years ago when this district was in need and guidance, needed a light. And I remember, we were so confused. We were a dysfunctional warden. And that stench of dysfunction and dividedness, it permeated throughout the entire district. Infected the staff, the community. And then we did this superintendent search. Some board members wanted to go in one direction. I wanted to stay, of course, because I had met this person that came in. And I thought that he was at the wrong place because he had a box of hard hats. And I said, "We're not interviewing for engineers or construction." But this state monitor and I just said, "Okay, let's hear what he has to say." And he had a plan, a blueprint. And he began saying what he was going to do in B1, 2, 3, 4. And that bell for me went off. And so it was a fight to get him here. But it was well worth it. Because of the games, the strides, the things that have taken place here in this district. We have been the butt of the joke for the former governor. Where every time he thought of Asbury Park, he talked negatively about us. Our kids, they were laughed at and ridiculed, and we were told, called elected idiots. Not anymore. What we have here is what Dr. Repellet has brought here in this district with his planning, how he strategized, and he brought his dream team with him. And so it's bittersweet for me. It's like, I'm not older than his mom, but it's like sending him off. And I know that he's going to do amazing things for the 1.4 children in this state. He's not just building brighter futures for us. He's doing it for all the kids. Can you imagine what they're going to be like? Can you imagine what they are going to have because of him? And so we have a plan in place. Because he's not just leaving us. He has someone that has been working with him from the very beginning. And that is Mrs. Sancho Gray. And I am so proud that she wants to stay and work with us. And she's going to build upon that legacy, that foundation. And she's going to have her own things, her own strategies. And I'm excited to be a part of it. I'm honored to be a part of it. So whereas Dr. Repellet has proudly and effectively served as superintendent of schools for the Asbury Park School District for more than three years. And whereas the honorable Phil Murphy, Governor, in recognition of the talent and accomplishments of Dr. Repellet, has selected Dr. Repellet to serve as Commissioner of Education. And whereas Dr. Repellet is expected to soon be appointed by the State Board of Education, and thereafter confirmed by the State Senate to serve as Commissioner. And whereas the board anticipates Dr. Repellet's resignation as superintendent effective upon his appointment by the State Board. And whereas the board laments Dr. Repellet's impending departure as superintendent of the district, but applauds his selection to serve not just the students of Asbury Park, but of all the students of New Jersey as Commissioner of Education. And whereas upon Dr. Repellet's resignation, the board will be in need of an acting superintendent to serve as chief school administrator pending a search for a permanent replacement for Dr. Repellet. And whereas Mrs. Sancho Gray's knowledge of the district and experience as the board's current assistant superintendent well qualifies her to fill the position of acting superintendent. And whereas the board and Mrs. Gray have negotiated the terms of an acting superintendent contract to take effect upon Dr. Repellet's anticipated resignation. And whereas the acting superintendent contract has been submitted to the executive county superintendent for review and approval pursuant to NJAC 6A23A-31. Now, therefore being resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education hereby approves the acting superintendent contract with Mrs. Sancho Gray, which contract shall be conditioned upon the approval of executive county superintendent and shall be effective upon Dr. Repellet's resignation as superintendent. And being further resolved that the board president, business administrator, board secretary, and board attorney are authorized to take all steps necessary and appropriate to carry out this action of the board.
I need a motion, please.
I'm going. Second.
Second.
Board discussion?
I just wanted to say Angela's review of the past four years and the beginning of all this. Her and I would sit in the interview meeting alone as board members. Other board members, some of them, they wouldn't show up. And I remember this guy with the hard hats and thought he was crazy, which was nice. And when we asked questions, he had real long answers. He talked a lot. And he knew his answers to all the questions. And he came back. Came back again. And I admired him for coming back a second time. Thought he was crazy. But anybody who can come back a second time and really want to give it a shot deserved it. And I'm glad it worked out very well, and I wish you all the luck.
Any other comments?
If I may, Madam President. So I feel like I came late to Hard Hat Nation. But I can say that when Carol asked me to run for the school board, and we approached Eric to run as well. We had all different ideas, and we were coming at it from different angles. But the one unifying factor was that we wanted to have a unified board to support Dr. Repellet and what he's done. And I can tell you that I wouldn't be on this board right now if it wasn't for Dr. Repellet and the accomplishments that he's made. So I just want to say farewell. Good luck. We have all of our thoughts and prayers. And don't be a stranger. And thank you for everything that you've done for Asbury Park.
Any other comments?
I came on board for the Board of Education when Dr. Repellet came on. I have knowledge of what went on before, but I thank God that I came on after he came on. And it has been an absolute pleasure. I have tremendous respect for the man. I would go to any end of the world with him if he needed me. And it's just been a joy. And it's such a joy to see that our children are getting finally what they need to succeed. And it is such a joy to see the children as happy as they are. And to accomplish what we've accomplished with the preschool program and the after-school program. We have so much to be proud of, and he is the source. But I know Mrs. Gray will continue to be the source since she, you know, behind every good man is a woman. She's it. So thank you. God bless you. Good luck. And I don't, not going to say we'll miss you, because you better be around.
Any other comments? Ms. Spreich?
Very privileged to be in board of the superintendent search. It's not my first one, but as it is right now, it's probably going to be my last one because I cannot participate in it anymore. But I'm glad I had the opportunity to vote for you, to fight for you. And I'm glad you fought for our district these last four years. And I know in your heart, you will continue to fight not only for state, for us, for every student. And as much as I want to cry right now because it just pains me to see you leave, I know you're doing the best thing for you, your family, and for the state of New Jersey. And I wish you all the luck and joy and prosperity. And we are going to be on a national spotlight, not just a state spotlight. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I generally don't say much when you get close to the head club. Even with all the dysfunction they've been through, I generally was the one who was a little quieter and just tried to make peace most of the time on both sides.
Yes.
And within the dysfunction, I said, "This is crap." When I was on one side or the other getting that up, the waves would go, we would have meetings at the toll, 11 o'clock at night. And I had to work around like 6 o'clock in the morning. And that was a pain. So we went through the process. It took joining the superintendents. And we finally decided that Dr. Repellet was superintendent. And when he came, it seemed like the whole Board of Education changed. It was incremental change, but it seemed like he became more organized. The reason I joined the Board of Education is because I wanted to see a brighter future. And using this term, I wanted to see a bright future for our students. I didn't see that with the public dysfunction. I see a bright future for our students now. Thank you, Dr. Repellet.
Anyone else? Ms. Hastings?
Ms. Zuzinski?
Yes.
Setien?
Yes.
Spreich?
Sorry, but I have to abstain.
Mr. Skrulj?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkley?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Saunders and.
I'm looking at you.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
Third. Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you, nobody opposed it.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned. I want to thank all of the community for turning down.